Okay, good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody healthy, nice and shiny here. And as I call your name, please respond. Akuri Izimi.
Some of you are going to be muted, so if you can raise your hand when you so mention.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Jennifer Lee. Dorothy Wong. Jeff Simmons.
President.
Victoria Knapp.
Here.
Billy Malone.
President.
Aaron Cheetah.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas. Gloria Sanica.
Present.
Antonio Bersera.
Excuse.
Nick Santangelo.
Here.
Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Hi, Reggie. Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Diane Markison.
Here.
We have a quorum with fourteen. I am going to text Dr. Thomas because she was planning to be here. So maybe she's having a problem getting in.
She was in earlier.
But she can't get in now, correct?
She won't be able to get in now. She wasn't. She must have dropped.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so we have a quorum with fourteen.
Moving on, item one point three, the approval of May the nineteenth meeting minutes. Councilmember Sutherland.
How about if we do the May nineteenth agenda?
Oh, sorry. How about that?
Okay, I think you all have the agenda that was sent to you. Are there any corrections or additions that we need to make? Okay, in that case, I move to have the agenda approved, accepted as presented.
Second.
Second Gloria, Snika. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
No nays, any abstentions? One abstention?
Who abstained?
Councilmember Snika.
No, I did not say.
Oh, did you hand out?
I second. No, I second.
Okay, I saw a hand come up after when I asked for nays or abstentions. So, okay.
Oh, you said raise your hand.
All right. Thank you. It you had to have a little bit of patience on this platform because sometimes things don't move at this speed we want them to.
Delayed.
Yeah. All right, so so moved. Moving on to officers' report, we're going to start with the chairman's report, item two point one with myself, the chairman. I'd like to say good evening, everybody, and thank you all for your patience during this difficult time as we, the town council, do our best to navigate the current environment, and that's in keeping this town council engaged, relevant, and transparent. It's not an easy process in this age of Zoom meetings and stay-at-home order. So I'd like to personally thank every town council member for all the hard work that I know you're doing behind the scenes and you're continuing to do and being visible for the community. I'd like to also encourage your community members, knowing that our town council members are still there for you, to check our website out for updated regular information and for contact information for your CT reps. We are still here, we are still engaged, and we are still having meetings. I'd like to personally thank councilmember Wong for her hard work in actually keeping the website current right now. That's been a lot of work I know that she's been doing, so I appreciate that and thank you that. And I'd like to finally give another shout out to the library for hosting these meetings, making them safe for us and the community, and actually just being able to make the ATC meetings happen. So I'd like to thank you, the library, again for that. So in saying that, I'd like to move on.
Really, a quick reminder, everybody that's not speaking, please mute your phones or your computer.
Okay, that is a very good point. Sometimes if you don't, if you haven't been in these meetings before, many of you have. If you if you don't press mute, it's like a microphone being near a speaker. It can actually cause a feedback and interrupt, and you won't even know it's happening to everybody else, and it will be an interference. So thanks for the reminder, councilman. Okay, moving on to the second officer's report, item two point two, vice chairman, Pat Sutherland.
This is fairly brief. As indicated on the agenda tonight, we have public comment as item number seven on the agenda. We asked ahead of time for those who wanted to make public comment to send their comments to me, and I will read them into the into the record. And I do I do have four of them here that I will read at the appropriate time. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, then moving on, item two point three, recording secretary, councilmember Jones.
The April minutes, they were sent to you for your review and your comments. I did receive some corrections and comments. I have incorporated all those corrections and comments into the final minutes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes in final form and have them placed on the website.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? So moved.
Thank you.
Moving on, item two point four, treasurer's report, councilmember Lee.
Hello. Our balance for this month is $2,156.26. We're in good standing.
We don't have a virtual cup to hand around?
No, no. Until we're live. Well, we're live.
Once we all once we all have Bitcoin, we'll be able to. Okay, well, thank you very much. Moving on, item two point five, corresponding secretary, councilmember Wong.
Hi, yes, thank you, Chairman Malone. So I'm just kind of looking over a couple of announcements. So let's first go to the Altadena website. So on there, I've been working on updating as we head into this roadmap to recovery, different information, which we have some amazing speakers today to talk about some of the things that they're doing as we reach our roadmap to recovery. So I am I do have that little page item COVID-19 news. So I've been just starting to add things in here as they become relevant. So we do have an updated safer-at-home order. And there's also business, so just really kind of look, it all still tracks back to covid19.lacounty.gov. And from that, they're starting to do a lot of subsets, and obviously, we're highlighting LA County Roadmap to Recovery. Cloth-based coverings, there's a new great post about that as we walk around everywhere we go now. And then we'll be doing a great presentation about food support. So that's one. And then on our announcements, we go back to the homepage. We have Edison is having wildfire town halls right now, a lot of it talking about their power safety shut-off work coming up. But if you go to the town council website, there is a meeting on the 21st, so just two days from now. So these are virtual wildfire safety community meetings. So anyway, so check that out. And then you can read along and keep updated as much as possible on various subjects such as our sheriff's station, which we'll also be talking about later. And I think that's that. I did receive an email, and I think it's something that we should agendize or talk about amongst ourselves. But there is a wildfire firewise council, firewise council grant, community grants, that we can be looking at home hardening. We have a couple of actual fire councils in Altadena, but that only relates, that I'm aware of, to just a couple of it. It's not all of Altadena. So it's an opportunity for us to kind of look at that and get involved on on educating ourselves and being ready for the next emergency, which could be wildfire. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on now to public safety reports. I believe the first item, three point one, California Highway Patrol. I do believe Officer Cooper isn't here, and we don't have an update. Is that correct? Councilmember Sutherland, we didn't receive a report from them. You are on mute, so I can't hear.
Oops, sorry.
You're muted again. There we go.
Yes, we do not have an update.
I just want to make sure it's official because they're on the, okay. Moving on, item three point two, the Altadena Sheriff's Station with Captain Jacobs.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, town council. First off, I just want to thank everybody for joining myself and Sheriff Inaueva last week at the town hall. The sheriff was pleasantly surprised to see so many Altadenaans engaged. I was not. I was not. It was a very, very proud moment for me as the station captain to come out of that meeting and just pretty much surprised everybody with with the overwhelming support. So I wholeheartedly really thank everybody for their participation and their and their ongoing efforts to save Altadena Station because we don't want to go anywhere. So we feel the love. But with that, I'm proud to announce that our Part One crimes overall for the department are down 10% department-wide, but they're down 18% in Altadena. So we really got a good handle on our Part One crimes year-to-date. We had four aggravated assaults. One at Mountain View and Glen Rose. The suspect was arrested. And it was basically a suspect drove by the victim, asked him if he was a gangbanger, where he was gangbanging, and then fired a shot in the air. Deputies were quick on that on that call and arrested the suspect. We had an incident at the Harriet Self Car Wash. There was an argument between two customers there where a suspect took out a baseball bat and swung the bat towards the victims. Luckily, he didn't strike them. Nonetheless, it was a felony assault with a deadly weapon. He was arrested. And then we had an incident at the 24-Hour Fitness where a victim was sitting in his car waiting for his friend when a suspect appeared and started breaking the car windows with a baseball bat and actually hit the victim in the leg. So I don't, I'm not sure what was going on at 24-Hour Fitness because it's closed. But that's an incident that happened. Our burglaries, I'm happy to announce, they are down sixteen incidents from 2019 at the same time this year, down for a total of 35% year-to-date. So thank you, everybody, for doing your part in locking your cars, closing your garages and things that make property crimes less of an opportunity. They continue to decline over the past 30 days, so that's great. Grand theft, we had four vehicles stolen, or more than 2019, so it's up about 21%, but it's up across the county. What they're thinking is our our trap detectives, which do all the stolen vehicles, they're thinking that the most popular vehicles stolen now are 1990 to 2009 Hondas. And I think they're stolen, they believe they're stolen because the locking mechanisms are so stripped out by the time they get so old. They're easy to steal. They steal them for a ride. They dump them in there, and they're quickly recovered. So that's kind of the news from the auto theft detectives. We had a an incident that occurred on an offer-up exchange. If you guys know what the offer-up, people, victims meet up, I shouldn't say victims, people meet up to sell items to each other. It's not very often in our town that it happens where they become victims, where whatever they're selling gets wiped by the person who has the intention of buying it, and then it becomes a theft. So we had an incident where a buyer came over to the victim's house to buy a gold diamond ring, and the suspect took a look at the ring and took off running. So I'd like to tell those folks that are watching that a safe exchange can be done right curbside in front of our station where it's recorded. So please, if you have any kind of anything of value, if it's a, you know, a little table or something, don't worry about it. But if it's something like this gold ring or a car, come come to in front of our station, even let the watch deputy know that you're out there, you're doing this exchange so that we can help protect you during that transaction. And then finally, we had two more stolen catalytic converters. This time, it was stolen from an older model GMC van and a Dodge truck. So there is no, last last month, I reported it was Toyota Prius. There's really no rhyme or reason, but they're still taking these things. We have some good leads, and we have a search warrant coming up here pretty soon. Hopefully, we'll get we'll get some folks in custody behind, more than just in our town, but San Gabriel Valley, local jurisdictions are having the same problems with the catalytic converters. That's all I have to report. Again, I just want to thank everybody for your overwhelming support. I feel it, the deputies feel it, and it's a proud moment to be an Altadenaan. I tell you that for sure.
Thank you, Captain. You you know that our entire community is behind your station and has our support in every way possible. We couldn't live without the relationships that we built with the sheriff. So thank you for being there and allowing us to support you. I just have a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the catalytic converters. Does that tend to be some kind of a local crime, or is that something where people are coming into our community?
The 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 couple of the suspects that we have identified are from the area, but there's all kinds of crews that are coming out and doing the same kinds of crimes in our town and in other towns close by.
Okay, thank you. I would assume it would be, you know, whoever's doing that is kind of a rink and then going from town to town on different evenings. And that would tend to sort of see be the MO that I would think of. The other the other question I for you is, as we live in this sort of stay-at-home order right now, I'm sure that crimes are slightly different because people are at home when people come to look in for break-ins and stuff. Is there something that is kind of showing right now that tends to be more of a crime in this unusual environment than others, one being, you know, auto theft or something? I mean, is there something that's sort of standing out more that we should be aware of while we're at home?
You know, there's really not, last month, I reported there was, at least in our area, there was a little uptick in domestic violence just because everybody's kind of getting underneath each other's skin and on each other's nerves. But that's not, I'm not seeing that other than the three that I mentioned, which are not in the homes. They were outside aggravated assaults that occurred. So I think on a positive note, we're not seeing an uptick in that. I can't say that the overall county's not seeing uptick in domestic violence. But I don't see anything that's really, you know, raising a red flag for me, but it's just a matter of people are home, so they're more aware. You know, if you see something, say something is always a good thing to remember. And just keep any, you know, neighbors in thought and in your in your eyesight from where you can see them and give us a call if you see something. So we are answering a few more calls, and people do come to the station here and there just to report various crimes or observations. So nothing in particular that's on the radar.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Snika, you're on mute, by the way. You have to unmute. Bottom, bottom lane, there you go.
Yeah, I wanted to know, have you noticed an increase in cybercrime since there's so many people on the internet now and working from home?
Nope.
No?
No.
They're still there, though, just not as many. They're just just not an increase, right?
Right.
Councilmember Jones, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, and maybe we could talk more about it later. Is 24-Hour Fitness is an ongoing problem, and now since it's supposed to be closed, can't there be a gate put up so cars can't go into that parking lot? So, I mean, that's just a suggestion because I'm having a virtual town hall, and that's one of the things they want to talk about.
So that's really up to the property manager. That's that's nothing, I mean, they they won't really work with us. We want to put up some cameras and things like that, and they they want nothing to do with cameras, so I can't imagine that they're going to want a gate. It'd be helpful.
And you can't say because it's costing so much money to the county to keep going out there. But we could talk later. We don't need to, because it's costing every time you have to show up there.
Yeah, we could put together some sort of analysis. Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Councilmember Vega?
You had mentioned in during one of the assaults that you said in your report that had asked if he was part of a gang. Are you seeing more? I mean, you haven't mentioned the word gang. We haven't heard that in a while in our community, our crime reports, and just wondering if there is now more activity that you're seeing or buzz of that activity in the community?
You know, we had an uptick, obviously, the end of December into January, but since the COVID-19, it's been really, really quiet. So this is kind of a, this is kind of a surprise, but it's 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 in the general area where knuckleheads hang out. So it's just, it's kind of an anomaly at this point because we haven't had any, knock on wood, any gang problems since COVID-19.
Any more questions? That's it. Thank you very much, Captain Jacobs.
My pleasure.
And we look forward to you after we all voice our words, the sheriff's station, and yourself to be here for a very long time. So we're working.
I hope.
With you in forty.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is item three point three, county fire. Maria Greiken.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the fire report for the month of April, we had 291 total responses. 256 of those were for medical calls, and we did transport 114 patients. We had two fires. Both of them were trash fires, and I'm going to talk about fires afterwards. And then we had a number of instances of power lines down or wires down or arcing wires, and then we had the nine traffic collisions. But that's it for the stats for the month of April. But what I wanted to talk about was what we are seeing countywide because of COVID-19 and the stay-at-home orders. We've seen a an overall decline in our calls for service. So overall, the number of people who are calling us is going down. But where we have seen a sharp increase is in structure fires. And it's because more people are home, they're spending a lot more time at home, and we're responding to a lot more structure fires. Now, I have not seen that specifically in Altadena, at least not yet, but I just wanted to let you know that that is kind of out there, and it is on an uptick. And we do have a public education program that is, it actually just came out at about the same time, so it was fortunate timing. But it's called our FIRE program, which is Family Instruction for Rapid Escape. And on our website, we have an instructional booklet for adults, and it has an accompanying coloring book for children. So that is available for download. Once we kind of start going back to normal and, you know, people can come to the station again, we will have supplies of these booklets at our station. And when we start having town council meetings in person again, I will, I can bring some to the meetings, both the coloring books and the instructional guides for the public to have. But I just wanted to let you all know about that.
Thank you. Is that the last report?
Yes.
Okay, I want to thank you for, it's always difficult at this time to come in to these meetings, so I really appreciate you taking the time to to come into the Zoom. And I know you had some issues with with your internet, so thank you for calling in. I'm also right now, before I move on, does any of the councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, hello. Ms. Greiken, Maria. So I think this is an exciting time for us in an odd sort of way, while many of us are still out of work, to really consider firewise safety, firewise education, virtual education on home hardening and that sort of thing. So is there any, and I think the county has ready, set, go. But is there anything, it just seems like an exciting time that we can organize ourselves to really start thinking about being firewise?
Yeah, and we just updated again the Ready, Set, Go booklet, and I will have hard copies of those, I believe, sometime in June. We do have a video on our website in the Ready, Set, Go section of our website. There is just a four-minute video, but it's very, very informative, and it is all on home hardening because that is one of the most important things that people can do. And you're right, I mean, this is a great time for it. People are at home. This would be a really good time to take up some home projects that center around hardening the home.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? Okay, moving on. Thank you very much, Ms. Great. Hold on one second. I have a question from councilman.
No, I just wanted to inform you, Billy, that Aaron lost his connection, and he can't get back in. Same with Dr. Thomas, so just FYI, they wanted me to advise.
Hey, I I don't know if if the library's listening, they're offering it is a lock system right now, so I.
I love it. They both know. They both know. They just wanted you to know.
Sorry, if you want to let them just go into the waiting room and wait in the waiting room, I could quickly unlock, let them in, and then close it again if you are okay with that.
Yes, yes. Could you text them, Victoria, because I can't while I'm hosting?
Yes, I would let them both know.
Waiting room and then just bear with us and times appropriate.
Get it back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on, under public safety reports for item three point four regarding our parks and trails update right now, I'm going to call on Sam Estrada.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
All right, so we had a lot that's going on right now with the parks and recreation. As of effective May 15th, LA County is reopening some amenities in accordance with the guidance from health officials, while others, areas of the park remain temporarily closed to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So I'm going to kind of briefly go over what's open, what's limited, and what is closed. And then I'll move on from there. So our local and community regional parks for passive use from 9:30 to AM to 6:00 PM are open. Eaton Canyon is open for trails, and our dog park in Chrysina Valley is open as well. What is limited, oh, I'm sorry, and then going back to it, it's open, but physical distancing is required. Now moving on to limited, with physical distancing and special guidance required, our tennis courts at both Farnsworth and La Malta, and our pickleball court at Farnsworth Park, our equestrian arena at La Malta Park, our community garden at La Malta Park, the golf courses in Altadena, and the LA County multi-use trails, as well as our free snack program at Farnsworth and La Malta and Charles White, and the outdoor restrooms from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. What's currently closed are the play and sports amenities. Until further notice, we do not have a timeframe right now. We are still in phase two of our operation. So I don't have a timeframe of when phase three and four will happen. So right now, they're closed, the playground, fitness equipment areas, skate parks, outdoor basketball courts, volleyball courts, baseball, soccer, multi-use fields, and lawn bowling. The building and indoor facilities are closed to the public, restrooms, gymnasiums, aquatic centers, senior and community centers, computer labs, multipurpose rooms, and classrooms. And like I said, we are in stage two of reopening. So we do have more to come in terms of like the next phase, but I, like I said, I can't give that timeframe right now. But I, like I said, I can't give that timeframe right now. In regards to what's open, just a quick guideline as far as like what to do when you get to the tennis court and pickleball. You make sure you maintain a physical distancing of six feet at all times. You must bring your own racket and balls. Write your initials on each ball and only handle your own tennis and pickleballs. Wear a face covering at all times except during play. And there is no group gatherings allowed. Other guidelines, only single play, singles play permitted. Wash and sanitize hands frequently. Pay online whenever possible, and that's mainly pertaining to our contract classes. Private one-on-one lessons are allowed with physical distancing and face coverings. One hour maximum play may be enforced on heavily trafficked days. Our equestrian arenas also maintaining a six foot distancing at all times. Wear face covering at all times, including common areas, parking lots and the stables. Face masks are not required during riding, so as long as physical distancing is maintained. Rides will be single file with physical distancing. There's a maximum of four riders inside the Loma Arena. Some other guidelines there are that have been implemented. Only one horse and one border will be allowed within the wash racks at all time. Use your own wash rack supplies. And any of our guidelines that anybody is looking for can be looked up on our county website. So if you go to parks.lacounty.gov, at the very top header, you will see the ribbon at the top and it has a link directly to our most updated guidelines and closures and cancellations to COVID-19. It takes you right there. Once you click on it, it will show you what's open, the response for the press. And then on the right-hand side, it'll take you everything to the trails, our stage two guideline and BMX areas, archery and trap and ski, model airplanes, community gardens. I will briefly go over community gardens. We, the Alstina Community Garden wasn't technically closed. So, but just make sure that if you are going into the community garden, you're maintaining six feet of distance. Wearing a face covering at all times. Gloves are required while gardening and handling tools and equipment. Remove all personal items and trash when leaving the garden. So I just want to kind of pinpoint the main areas of the Altadena area of what's been updated. Because I know that there's other information that's on there that doesn't really pertain to the Altadena community. But that's the main focus of what's going on with the Altadena community as far as our response to COVID-19. One other thing that I did want to mention to everybody is that we are, I know that since the programs are not being run in person, however, we are doing virtual programming. So if you do go to our website and go to parks.lacounty.gov and then you go down and there's a link that says Parks From Home. And if you scroll down, it'll say find a recreation class. And once you click that link, it will take you directly to our county's YouTube page. And it has all of our classes. We have dance and exercising and sports and health and fitness, arts and crafts. Educational STEAM programs. There's a large variety of video that has been uploaded over the last month and a half. So we have a lot of information that's still coming in. So we even had the Mother's Day Arts and Crafts that we've uploaded. We have cooking classes that we've uploaded. So even though this time is tough to where we can't directly interact with the community with our recreational programming, we wanted to provide something where we can still engage with the community. And I'm actually on the virtual programming team for our, for our department. So it's pretty exciting to see us starting to expand and get more video and content up because at this time, like everybody else, we don't know how this is going to impact everybody long term. So we needed to wait to have something viable for the public in the meantime. And we also will be providing this for the public even after when everything has been lifted and all the stay at home has been removed. Because we want to still provide this content into the future and expand it into the future. Make sure everything I have on my agenda is right, is done. One last thing, another thing is that the trails, you can look on the trails.lacounty.gov and you can see what trails are open. There are some restrictions as far as what you can do mainly, it is keeping the social distancing. The Eden Canyon Nature Center is closed to the public, but the trails are open. And they do monitor them to make sure everybody's maintaining the social distancing. And most of their information as well is on, provided on our website as well as along, along with everything else. So you'd be able to pull it up and see what's, what's open, what's not open. And like I said, we are in phase two. So we do have a long way to go, but we're still excited that we're getting to start opening up things. We did have pickleball open up on Friday last week. So hopefully more as time goes by, we can get some more things open. But like I said, we had a great response with pickleball. We had over 20 people there to play pickleball safely. And they were out there this morning playing pickleball. So it's a great response from the Altadena community.
Thank you, Sam. And as we get updates from you, can you pass any information or any PDFs you have through to, to councilmember Wong so we can post on our website? You know, updates and, and safety requirements and so forth and so on regarding the parks and Altadena especially. And I, I also like to hear some of the programs that you were talking about. If we can get some of those on our website as well, or some of the information. With school, with the school year ending in just over a week. There's going to be a lot of kids looking for activities with the camp closures and everything else. So this would be a great opportunity for them to, to actually start using some of the programs that you were mentioning. So thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Soneka, unmute.
Um, will, um, will you be providing staff that will be there to monitor, I guess, to ensure that the community is following the, the safe guidelines?
Yes, actually.
Trails and that type of thing.
Yes, that's actually the interesting thing is that even though with this whole COVID-19 is that we've actually had staff onsite nearly every single day at each park. One of the main responsibilities of the staff is to monitor the park on an hourly basis to make sure that, that, that anybody coming into the park, whether that's a family or just friends walking in, that they're maintaining social distancing, no large gatherings. So they're there every day. The only days that staff are not on, on duty are Sundays and Mondays. We did have staff there on, on Mother's Day. However, the parks are still closed on Sundays and Mondays. But we do have staff there on Mondays at Loma, Farnsworth and Charles White to serve snack.
And will they be monitoring the trails also?
For Eden Canyon, yes. Any other additional trails that fall outside of that, we won't have any staff monitoring. But at Eden Canyon, yes, they will.
Thank you. Any councilmember Wong?
Hi, Sam. My question, so I've been getting a lot of comments, especially at the access points to the trails. You know, the Altadena Crest Trail. And, and now, you know, obviously the contention with, with whether you wear a mask or not. And if you look at the LA County Trails website or app, I believe it's on the app too. Parks and Rec should have an app, by the way. I haven't found that. But with that said, when we had the trail closure signage up, you know, we had trails closed signs that kind of went around. And I, it would be really great. I've kind of talked a little bit with Public Works, but I haven't talked to Parks and Rec yet since you guys control the trailheads in terms of signage. So if there's any way to get the trail protocol, there's a really great sign that's out there about masks. Then also, there's now great messaging on masks. Because that has been a really stressful community concern where you're entering the trailhead or you're exiting. And, you know, bicycles are going and they're not wearing masks and runners and hikers. Half of them are and half of them aren't. And that's where you're going to really get into compromising social distancing safe space. So I think whatever we can do to improve the signage, we had the barricades from Public Works. Maybe we can print out some large signs again, like the trail closure sign and, and have that protocol. There's such great work that in the infographics, anything that can be simplified. And there was one that I saw, which was really cool. But it really helps remind people. And then whatever messaging, it, obviously the US Forest Service, you don't move very far from the trailhead and you're in the Forest Service. So on their signage, they don't have anything about masks in their signage currently. And then I don't know how, how much they're able to really put that out there. So, you know.
What I'll do is I'll reach out because I actually have a call this Thursday with our, one of our exec staff. So they're the ones that are responsible for putting a lot of the information for the community out there. So I'll see if they can develop one because I don't want to, I don't want to make one personally or have staff make one. I want to have one that's more official from the main, the department itself. So I will put what, I'll talk to her on, I'll send her an email and then I'm actually talking with her on Thursday. So I'll see if they can develop one from our PIOs and pass it out so we can post it. Because the information that's posted at all of our tennis courts and entryways, that's provided by the department. Like the park itself, staff don't make it. So I'll see if they can get us something where it's a little more visible and shows like, yeah. Because I was even looking at the one at the tennis court at Farnsworth and it's like tiny. And it says like, wear your mask. So it's, it's kind of like up near too of, you know, people might not know to wear a mask with, once they walk in, if nobody's around them or what the protocol is. So I'll put that out there because I know some people have questions about that. Even I had a question about that because I've seen people at the park and they're not even wearing a mask, they're just out there. So as long as, so I'll get a more clarity for you guys and I'll make sure to send any information your way.
Thank you. I'll share, I'll share with you what I found between the LA County Trails and the different things too, just so you know.
Yeah, definitely. That'd be helpful to share that with me. And on a side note, I forgot to mention that we are also going to be serving our, doing our lunch program starting June 15th. It will be a grab and go. So normally you'd have to eat it onsite, but the state is allowing the families to come to the park, pick up the meals and then take them home for anybody that's 18 and under or anybody that's 18 and up that is, is handicapped. So they can come to the park starting June 15th at Loma, Farnsworth and Charles White at 12:00 PM.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I have one more question. You said, you were saying that the park would be responsible for monitoring Eden Canyon. Who's responsible for monitoring like the San Gabrielino Mountain Trail and Cheney Trail and the other trails? Would that be the sheriff's station?
Yeah, that doesn't really fall in Parks and Recreation.
I think that's the forestry, isn't it?
Is it forestry?
Yeah, because we're only responsible for the trails at Eden Canyon. Because even like there's a small trail right behind Loma Alta. And we're responsible up to a certain point. And then it turns into the, I believe, like you said, the US Forestry.
Okay, next question, councilmember Sutherland.
Sam, I have not been on your website recently. Because in the past, I tried to find things and to tell my residents and just couldn't find what I thought I was looking for. But I know that you've put a lot of, not you personally maybe, but somebody's put a lot of work into the website, right?
Right.
So, because the way you described all of the, the things that are being offered. I mean, that sounds wonderful and you can bet I'm going to go take a look at it when we are through tonight. Because I think it's such an easy way, if it's as easy as it sounds when you said it. All of that is new, the way that it's put together? Would that be a true statement?
Well, with the virtual programming, yeah, with the virtual programming, yes, that, that started last month. But the overhaul of the website basically took place about a year ago. So it, it's kind of like ever growing. They've been working on it and expanding it so you can, because we, I think I had mentioned to you guys too. Before COVID-19, we were going to do online registration and this whole thing kind of put a halt to that. But that was kind of like part of our business plan was to enhance our website. And then now we're just continuing that with, including the, the links to the YouTube. So we make it easy. So you can just click on it where it says programs from home or classes from home, you click on it and it takes you right to our YouTube channel. So you don't have to search for it. And then it's even broken down. So if you want certain classes or you have things like you have grandkids or your kids, you want to give them classes and educational things or do cooking classes or things like that, it's all on there for you to, to view.
Thank you.
I'm going to cut questions off on that because we still got a full agenda and we have about one hour left within our meeting. So I'm going to move on now to special presentations. And the first one, item 4.1, I'm just going to do a brief update regarding the sheriff's station right now. First of all, I'd like to thank the entire town council. It was around less than two weeks or just less than two weeks, I think on May the 4th, when we first heard that there was a possibility of the sheriff's station closure. I like, again, I'd like to thank the entire town council how they came together in unison and made it happen and took a position. And our position is we cannot lose our station. We love our station. So whatever it takes, and we made a public announcement that we'll do anything we can to work with the powers to be and help them decide whatever they need to decide to make sure that we keep that station. We did send a letter down to the sheriff and copied with the board of supervisors. Our position, basically what, what, again, stating that whatever the budget issues they're dealing with, please don't let it affect our station. The station closures included Altadena and Marina Del Rey, which are the only two LA County sheriff stations that 100% service unincorporated areas. That's again, is why we need to do it. We're not servicing any incorporated cities. These stations are unincorporated. So thanks again. The Altadena Town Council has communicated and sent letters. In, in that same list of concerns and letters, Assemblymember Chris Holden wrote a letter. Again, in trying to save our station and has communicated, I know directly with Sheriff Villanueva. Passing the Unified School District has wrote a letter of support. Again, sent that down. Mayor Terry Tonic of Pasadena, again, has written his letter of support. Senator Portantino, he's, I know he's been working, trying to work with the supervisors and, and others in saving our stations. He also announced his support for all our efforts and our community efforts. He's in full support of saving our station. Congresswoman Judy Chu, she also wrote an official letter from the Congresswoman's position to support all our efforts in our community and keeping the station open. I've had constant communication from Marina Del Rey and a lot of the community leaders there that are communicating with us up here, showing united support between our communities. I also want to announce that La Corte Centers Town Council has also come out and officially made recommendations in support of our efforts for the station because it, public safety can affect their neighborhood as well. And if the station should be unified, which we do not want to happen. Almost every group in town, an organization from the Chamber of Commerce on, too many to mention have all showed their concerns, unified and wrote letters of support. Again, that's from every group and individuals. I would hate to think how many have gone. So I would again, please encourage everybody to continue that. Let's just not make it a one week effort. This is a continued effort of support for our sheriff's station. So continue writing those letters, continue the support. In, since in that last few days, we've had one town hall from the Citizen Oversight Committee where myself and John Heath, Marina Del Rey, were both panelists at, at the town hall. And where many, many, many members of the community were able to address their concerns. And then the sheriff Villanueva had two town halls, both on Thursday and Friday. Again, both full meetings where we were all able to address our concerns. For tonight's meeting, for this Altadena Town Council meeting this evening, I reached out to both Sheriff Villanueva and the supervisor's office for an update or a statement I reached out to both Sheriff Villanueva and the supervisor's office for an update or a statement that I can give to the town council this evening and read into record. I did receive one response from Supervisor Barger, which I will read now into record. And this was I received today. So this is a statement from Catherine Supervisor Catherine Barger. And she states, "Public safety remains my top priority, especially during these unprecedented times." Following the sheriff's press conference on May the 4th, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved a motion that Supervisor Ridley Thomas and I co-authored, which directed the sheriff to cease all efforts on station closures, including a proposal to close the Altadena Sheriff's Station. The sheriff's annual budget is approximately 3.5 billion. This represent 25% of all the county's discretionary spending. Prior to COVID-19, the sheriff's department was facing a projected budget deficit of about 18, 9 million. This shortfall will only be further compounded by this current public health crisis. These budget overruns require thoughtful recommendations and mitigation efforts that will help reduce overtime and define cost savings without endangering public safety. I, along with my colleagues, have continued to urge the sheriff to work with the C E O to develop appropriate budget mitigation strategies that will not impact our local communities. These conversations are currently underway and the C E O is actively reviewing and analyzing budget curtailment plans received from each of the county departments, including the sheriff. We will keep the community updated as we continue to engage on this important issue. And you have my commitment to remain a strong advocate to keep the Altadena Station open. Thank you. From Catherine Barger. Again, I did, I haven't received a statement from the sheriff, but we did hear his statement at two town hall meetings. So again, we are informed from both. And I just want to end on that note is that that this is a continued effort. And this is something that I think our entire, affects our entire community and we all are behind. It, it's not just the town council here. It's, it's all of us. And remember the, the bigger voice we have, the louder will be heard. So let's continue speaking. Let's continue staying behind our, our station and the commitment that's given to our community over the last several decades. And, and we want to make sure that remains and, and that all comes down to public safety. If we keep everything in track, then we, we will continue improving our public safety of our community. And that's where our focus will be. So please, yeah, one second, please, please for continued updates, please check our our website. Councilmember Wong is posting things as, as they come across. Okay. So Councilmember Simmons, you had a comment?
I just want to make sure that we are consistent in parsing the language that's being bandied about. Villanueva consistently says he's not closing the station. But he uses the consolidation of staff as a mask for the fact that he's still planning or seems to still be planning to remove captain on down to patrol deputy supervisors or stopping it, stopping just short of patrol deputies and supervisors. Most of the community, community relations folks that we value, the Vida, the explorers, the AMRT liaisons. Those are all in the consolidation of staff bucket that is different from, I'm not closing the station. So we didn't just be very consistent and mindful of the, of the messaging that's happening here and not, not not let that get, get glossed over.
Okay. And anybody else have a comment? I, I would like to, to agree with Councilmember Simmons here. He has a really good point is as we continue to speak, it's not about, it's not about keeping the station open. It's about keeping the station open with the integrity and the infrastructure that it currently has. So, you know, I mean, let's just make sure that what we want is not lost in the words. And what we want is the continued infrastructure. So any, any, any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
I wanted to remind everybody that there is the petition going around. It has over 4,000 signatures on it now. And that petition is going around and can be signed every day. So that's another thing we can do and, and promote. And just along that same vein, I want to just publicly thank Aaron and Antonio for their help last week. They were, and Diane, we were a team. So I just want to thank you guys. You know what you did.
Thank you. And that, and then I know that the, the petition that you're mentioning is going around with the community. That's actually a joint effort between Marina Del Rey Community and Altadena. And, and it can include anybody else from any other communities that also wish to sign on. So and again, I, I also would like to say thank you to Councilmember Jones for her efforts and everybody that she mentioned. Our response was quick and it was prompt. And the call to action was immediate. And I, I never seen the council pool in my time. She's seen the council come together so fast in getting behind something that I did with this. So all the efforts, this is not just one or two persons opinion. So all the efforts, we should all be proud and, and thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Wong?
Oh yeah. So just another great opportunity to share what the sheriff's station means to us and all the programs is photos that you guys have taken, you know, at different events you've been at. You know, all of that is really powerful messaging when we have visuals of how the sheriff's department interacts with us. You know, at various community events. And then someone just shared with me, save Altadena Sheriff's Station. Keep station open and fully staffed. Contact Sheriff Villanueva Supervisor Barker. Altadena is only 3.1 million of 3.5 billion. Don't tread on Altadena. So we have a lot of creative people here and I know we all have great photos and I think it's just again, another opportunity to really organize ourselves and
I'm, I'm going to move on now, but I want to, I do think it's important to know that this is an ongoing conversation. So this is not just, this is just an update here. But it's an ongoing conversation that needs to continue. So okay, I'm going to move on to item four point two, special presentation Devil's Gate Project. L A County Parks and Works, start with Stephen Burger.
All right, everybody. Thank you, members of the council for having me here and allowing me to talk, talk to you about the project. I think I've met most of you. I see a lot of faces and names there. I'm Steve Berger. I'm Assistant Deputy Director for our Construction Division over at Public Works and I'm, I'm in charge of the Devil's Gate Reservoir Restoration Project. So we're in, we're in year two of the four year of what, what is essentially a four year project to clean out the reservoir. And I thought I'd start by just giving everybody an update or a review of the project and an update where we're at and what we're going to be doing this hauling season. So we're going to talk a little bit about the construction overview and go through a few things we're doing and and, and move through that. So next slide, please. All right. So first we'll talk a little bit about the habitat restoration and the project, a large element of the project is the restoration of the habitat around the perimeter of the reservoir. And we started that in early 2019. And essentially the habitat restoration, you know, is, is well underway. If you want to go to the next slide, we've got some more details on that. We've got, you, you see that we've got 300 coastal live oak acorns, over 4,000 container plants. Approximately 72 pounds of seed. I think that number might not be right. I believe it's a lot more than that even. And so we're, like I said, we're doing a full native restoration efforts around the edge of the reservoir. Next slide, please. This is some photographs of the restoration efforts. You see, there's a photo before we cleaned out the invasives and then after with some young natives planted and getting ready to be established. Okay. And then talk a little bit about the sediment removal that we've accomplished to date. We've so far had, as of last year, we had 96 days of hauling. Last hauling season, we had a little over 31,000 truck trips. Removed just shy of half a million cubic yards. That's about 25% of the volume we need to remove. So that we're about a one-fourth of the way there. We were using up to 85 trucks with 425 truck trips a day. We did reach, reach our maximum truck trips during the hauling season. For this year, we're hoping to start actually tomorrow, they're going to start working the reservoir to get it ready to begin hauling. It should take about three weeks to get ready to start the trucks hauling. So right around June 8th, we'll, we'll actually begin hauling the sediment. We'll still be using about 85 to 95 trucks. Hope to get our 425 truck trips in. And the hauling hours are going to be the same as they were last year. We're going to have no work on the weekends, holidays, red flag events. Next slide, please. And the hauling routes are also the same as they were last year. We've got a staggered schedule for the, for what used to be the school year. We were hauling in the mornings and evenings toward the Altadena side. And then you'll see in the next slide during during the middle of the day during the school year, the trucks were coming in on Windsor, Oak Grove, and then leaving Oak Grove Berkshire, starting in what would have been the summer season, which is actually really, we're going to start doing this when we start hauling. All the traffic goes out the Oak Grove Berkshire exit. And that's the, that's the balance we struck with both communities when we originally developed the project. All right. Next slides, please. And then trail closures, we, the trail closures will be the same as they were last year. We closed the trail during the hauling season during the day from seven to five. We open them up in the evening and then they're open on the weekends. Dust mitigation, this is something we were challenged with last year. I wasn't happy with the way the dust, dust ended up in the, in the, during the hauling. We implemented quite a few additional measures. These, these tire washes are just just but a fraction of what we've implemented. We've got stabilized construction entrances. We've got people brushing down the trucks and toward the end of last year, we finally achieved success. We got the, the mud and the dirt off the roads and we, we ended up with quite a bit cleaner project. So that's the idea is we're going to continue that this hauling season and we're going to keep a really good eye on that. Intersection improvements, we've to mitigate the impacts of the project, we put in two intersection improvements. The first one is at Windsor and Oak Grove that went in middle of 2019. Just a, a point of clarification, some folks were worried about the left turn lane there. We actually have it set. So it only activates when there's a vehicle waiting to turn left. So otherwise the folks on the other side get a green light. And then we just completed Oak Grove Berkshire over on the Locken Yada High School side. We just completed a project to improve the signal there. Some of you may have noticed, we've made some improvements to the roads there during the off season. The roads were not that good when we started and rather than us going out and patching the potholes during the hauling, which we were doing and it was working, we just, we just thought it would be good, good to go ahead and just do some some work on the roads to basically clean them up, get a new top coat on top of them. And that should really make a big difference during the year as the trucks are hauling and, you know, that'll, that'll allow the road to stay in better condition. So at the end of the, at the end of the project where we're done, we're going to clean it up once again, and this will help, help in that effort. Air quality monitoring work plan, most of you are familiar. We've got stations out there around the reservoir and in the community. This is to monitor the pollutants from the trucks and the dust from the reservoir. And we've got a total of six. We're actually putting a seventh station over near the intersection of, of Windsor and Oak Grove. That was at the request of the community. They wanted to have some monitoring over on that end. I believe there was a preschool there. And we're going to be citing it there so we can keep an eye on the air quality in that area as well. There, okay, there's the, there's the location seven I just talked about. So we're, we're currently working with the owners of that school and we're hoping to have that operational in the next few weeks. Another improvement we've done is although we were monitoring, monitoring the air quality all last year, it was a manual process. We actually had to physically read the readings on the monitors and then it would be compiled into a daily report, which would be put up, I believe, the next day on the website. Now, the good news is the air quality monitoring is going to be real time on an hourly basis. So if somebody goes on the, onto our website, they can see hour by hour at each of our monitors how we're doing. Next slide, please. We're also working on something of what, what we call a phase two monitoring program. And this is something we've developed with some members of the community. California Resources Board and the University of California Riverside. This is an effort to actually hook some equipment up to the trucks we're operating on and, and triple check them to make sure they're operating cleanly. We're going to going to measure that and we're going to essentially make sure the trucks are operating as intended. If there's any any malfunctions, we can act on it quickly and it'll help us, help us keep the project clean. Two parts, part A, we're doing the diagnostic reading like I talked about. And the second part, we're actually doing similar to a smog check where, where you put a sensor up the tailpipe and and run the truck through a couple of cycles to see, see how they're performing. I'm going, going communication. We've got a dedicated, dedicated website, which is devilsgateproject.com. I'll put that up a little bit later. It's got a resources tab. We send out email blasts. I think most of you are on the email list. You probably get our communications. We've got newsletters. And of course, meeting with the town council like this, we're committed to continuing engagement and working with the community to, to make this as clean and painless as we can for what, you know, what is admittedly a very difficult project for everyone. And that's it. So we've got our information there, devilsgateproject.com, our website, and then we've got a hotline which, which we respond to quickly. We also respond to emails if anybody has any concerns. I know a lot of you know Brittany and some of you have her contact information. She's still very active on this project this year and, and if you have any questions, you can contact her and she works with me and some of the other team members and will work, work really hard to address any concerns you have. We're, we're motivated as we were last year to make this a, make this a great project and do right by the community. And that's my, that's my presentation. Open to questions or any other comments you may have.
Okay, I'm going to opening up to the council for questions. I do want to let everybody know. One, I, I think we're going to have to go, if Chloe's listening to switch out unfortunately the presentation so we can see the council members, but they hand over their question. Otherwise we won't see them. And then two, I do want everyone to know that this, we are running low on time now. And we do have a full agenda. So try to make sure the questions are short and concise. We can get through this as quickly as possible. So first question, Councilmember Wong?
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? So thank you for the presentation. I had one, I have a couple of questions, but I don't see Steve on the screen.
I'm here. Can you see me now?
Hi, okay. Hi, thank you. So regarding the haul route and then regarding the school and the school sessions that could happen and the route. It seems to me based on the way you guys are scheduling this that it could work out that it goes to the summer schedule by the time the excavation starts. That seems to be lining up. And then, so then my question would be my two questions, because I probably have a lot which we can talk about later, but just so the public understands. One general question is with, you know, this dust hauling and these things going on during COVID. You know, it'd be good if there is some sort of approach that, you know, does get shared from the county about, you know, while we're you know, we're, we're, most of us are still safer at home. So there definitely is. It would be good to hear how this project is concerning the community as it relates to COVID and maybe that discussion's happening with the Citizen Advisory Committee. And that would be great information that the Citizen Advisory Committee can include the community on. But I would like to kind of have that general view and then it'd be great. It's also a great opportunity to understand how the schools will be operating. To see if then, if the schools are out, maybe there could be a nice conversation. Because then otherwise during rush hour, when people are working, if schools are out, the trucks will be primarily coming and going on the Altadena, West Pasadena side. So that would be something good as this evolves. So that would be that. And then the web And then the website, there's just a lot of concern, you don't have to answer this now, but there's a lot of concern about the air quality monitoring and how we're really going to be. So I saw in your presentation, it looks simple in reading, but there was a lot of concern about real-time monitoring and the community understanding that. So I get, my question would be COVID.
And Dorothy, Dorothy, I'm glad you brought that up. I actually had planned to talk about COVID. We were going to put a slide together and it didn't get in there. So thank you for reminding me to bring that up. So yeah, we did hear some concerns from the community regarding COVID. And of course, that's a very valid concern. Our project is all air quality and COVID is respiratory, respiratory issue. So what we did is, and in fact, this is part of one of the reasons the project is a little bit delayed in starting. A lot of it had to do with the rainy season we had. But we also put the brakes on the project while we looked into this issue. We actually met with some of the experts over at LA County Public Health. We met with them, spent some time with them. We shared the information we had. We have air monitoring data from last year. We have, you know, some programs in place to mitigate and react to dust. And we shared that with public health and they actually did respond to us and say, you know, based on, based on the, the way we're operating, they felt we were still safe or, you know, good to continue operating. So they gave us the okay, give us a clearance to continue. So that's the good news for the communities. We did have the experts look into this and they, they did let us know that we're okay to move forward. Now, we're, we're not stopping there. We're taking this opportunity to work with them and essentially have them look over our shoulder this year and make sure our operations are staying clean, making sure if they have any advice as we've been, begin operating, that we can react to that and ensure the community, we're doing everything they would want us to do. So that's the good news is we've got essentially the people you would want us to get involved. And there's a gentleman named Dr. Cyrus Rang and he's been very helpful to us. And he's kind of, this is one of his specialties. He deals with these questions throughout the area. And this is, like I said, that's one of the things he's been kind of tasked with doing is making sure things that are happening are, are consistent with what they want to happen. And they gave us the clearance. And so we'll, we'll share a little more of that information as it comes in. And if you have any further questions about that or anything you want to relay to us, to relay to them, we'd be happy to do that. Under your set, next question, which is the haul routes. I think it was a good idea and we had the same idea is now that we've got school not in session, the old model that we kind of agreed with the community where part of the time it would be going to the Altadena side. But then when school was off for summer session, we would try to balance it by putting more that way. Well, now that school's off pretty much full-time now, it's a good idea, should we let the traffic go that way. And like you said, Dorothy, it is going to start going that way when we start hauling, just because it so happened to be the summer session anyway. But we can look into when school is going to resume next year. We can look into whether there's modifications we can make. We'd want to run that through the, all the communities, through probably the community advisory committee. That would probably be the best vehicle to do that. So, so I think it's a good idea and I think it's something we're willing to look into. Whatever we can do to minimize the effect, we're open to.
Just a quick question, when do you think the website will be updated since you guys will be starting soon?
It should be before we start hauling, we're hoping in the next week, yeah.
Thank you.
Is it possible for us to either link to the website or use the presentation you, you gave us so that Dorothy can actually add it to our website? And then maybe a link where if there's any questions that anybody has, that those, you can direct us to where those questions we can find answers, people can find answers.
That would be great if you'd like us to make your, your website kind of interact with ours. That would be, that would be great.
And can you do that?
I know where to find you, Steve.
Yeah, no, and we can have our tech, you know, I'm not an IT guy, but we can have our folks make that happen for sure.
All right, okay, sounds good. I'll leave that to you, council member one. We've got a still to get through, so I want to try and make it quick. But can we take one more question?
Can you hear me, Billy?
Yes.
Okay, you don't see my picture because it froze and just, and it disappeared. I just need to know, Steve, I received just before, literally I was logging on to the meeting and I received a whole list of questions from one of my residents. I'm not going to ask you now and I may be able to answer some of them myself. But if I can't, should I contact you or Brittany or how should I? I want to get our answers.
Yeah, I would start with Brittany. I mean, Brittany and I talk ten times a day. So, you know, start through her and we'll definitely get your answers to those questions.
Dorothy has her email, do you, Dorothy?
Yeah.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
As Dorothy mentioned, we will be posting on our website the communication links. So if anybody also has a question, they can also go direct to Public Works and get those questions answered. And then we can also take them and pass them along as well.
I did notice Mark Gimm, he's one of the members of our team. He was in today listening and he's kind of one of our technical experts. Mark, did you have anything to add? I saw you might have wanted to chime in.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Dorothy.
Hello.
At the Devil's Gate Project website, I'll also email you my email address so you can contact me directly so we can work on the website together. And also, if there's any questions, if you email it, Brittany, Steve and all the parties that need to get informed will have the information. We do talk about it pretty frequently.
Thank you. I did share my concerns about the bicycling pedestrian movement across Oak Grove. And I gave, I can give you the specific highlights, I gave them to Brittany, just to.
Yeah, she, she shared those with me already and we're in the process of getting together. You know, of course, there's a few different jurisdictions there managing kind of the bike interactions there. So we're going to try to get to get a meeting set up with everyone to talk about that.
Yeah, because it just merges into trucks. That would be my main concern with no signage. And then suddenly, you know, even there are a lot of people running across there, especially during the hours of your construction. So, thank you.
We have to move on, so maybe we can get those questions that are all valid and we can answer those questions and we can get them answered and we can post, post everything in the communication online. Thank you. Okay, moving on, item five point two, sorry, five, item five point one. Altadena Library is going to make a report. Nikki Windsor, are you there?
Hey. Hi, guys. All right. Oh, Chloe, what should I do? Turn my sound off? Okay. Yeah, that's better. So greetings from my office at the library and we're back, hooray. So I know I highlighted many of our digital offerings last month. So tonight I just wanted to highlight our new and expanded ones, being that we are now, the staff are now back at the library. But I do want to emphasize that at this point, we're going to be closed to the public at least until June first. I personally think that's going to be an even longer date, but we're, we're, you know, being guided by LA County Public Health as well as the state of California, so more info to come. But we did bring the staff back, like I said, this week, we're on staggered schedules. And one of the things I wanted to announce is our new curiosity connection curbside service. I know Victoria is going to be really excited to hear about this. While we hope you're enjoying all of our digital offerings that I highlighted last month, we know that nothing can spark curiosity and wonder like reading a physical book. Or come check out DVDs or any other library material that we have. Curbside pickup is going to be taking place at the main library and is going to launch this Thursday. So actually, starting tomorrow, patrons will be able to call, we're doing it by phone only right now. You can call it six-two-six-seven-nine-eight-zero-eight-three-three on Monday through Saturday, ten to four. And then patrons will be able to place their order and then be able to pick up the next day. And then pickup times will be discussed with the person when they call in and we'll ask for like make and model of the car so that the staff will be able to do a contactless pickup. So we wanted to show you an overview of the parking lot where, so that you know where the curbside is going to happen. As you can see from this graphic, we're also designating many spots for people that want to pull into the parking lot and use the wifi and just in case they don't have it at home or, I don't know, maybe they want to break from their house and sit in their car in our parking lot, just next to that area, kind of where the staff doors are. If you're familiar with the layout, that's where we're going to have designated curbside pickup area. There will be tables next to cars so that, like I said, people will tell us what make and model they'll be driving. We'll see them come in, they'll set up an appointment time and bring their order out. They're also able to leave returned items on the table if they'd like, again, contactless. And then the rest of the parking lot is designated for staff right now. In addition to that, we were doing live chat and phone reference, but the hours have expanded now that we have staff back in the building. So if you have any questions, information needs, just want to talk to one of your favorite library staff members, you can now call us or use live chat, Monday through Saturday from ten to six, so ten AM to six PM. One of the virtual events that I wanted to highlight was our annual Friends of the Library Annual Meeting. That's going to be coming up on Saturday, June sixth at one PM. They're having their annual meeting and it will be a virtual live program featuring author Tim DeRoche and retired State Senator, Education Reform Advocate Gloria Romero. Well, they'll be discussing Tim's new book, which just came out, "A Fine Line: How Most American Kids Are Kept Out of the Best Public Schools", which I think is a recurring theme that we find in this community as well as Pasadena. So I'd highly encourage you to attend. You just could visit our website and go under events and there will be a link through the calendar to be able to access that event. Again, I think it's going to be a really good one, so I'd highly encourage all of you to attend. So we had our May board meeting last night, which was, from what I understand, a record six and almost a half hours. It was like a fourteen to sixteen-hour day for Chloe and I, because it was our first day back in the building too. It was a week early due to the Memorial Day holiday. During the trustee reports, we were informed that our wonderful trustee Gwen McMullins is submitting her resignation effective June first. So we will be going through an appointment process. The Board of Trustees will be accepting applications for those who would like to serve on our board for her unexpired term, which basically goes through the end of this year. Applicants must be at least eighteen years old, residents of Altadena and a registered voter, voter in Altadena. Please spread the word for us. If you know of people that may be interested in, you know, serving on the board, get a taste of it. The deadline to apply is June twelfth, which is ten days before our June twenty-second trustee meeting, where that person will actually be appointed. For more information, you can visit our website at altadinalibrary.org/june2020boardvacancy. I did also want to mention that the board also voted to send a letter to the sheriff's office on behalf of the Board of Trustees opposing the closure last night. Just that, since this, that was a discussion point with you guys, that they also are sending a letter as well. We put it in the mail today actually, as well as to many of the public officials. In addition to the board vacancy, we also have three seats on the board that will be open in the November twenty-twenty election. The filing period for candidates opens July thirteenth with a filing deadline of August seventh. One of those is Gwen's seat. So if the person that gets appointed would like to stay in that seat, they will also have to run for election as well, but do not have to do that. For more, for those interested, please visit our website where Chloe has put up a lot of information, which is altadinalibrary.org/boardelection. Again, there's also more information on the California Fair Political Practices Commission that we would encourage people to check out as well. That, and that link and many more are on our website. All right, so can you believe it's already summer reading time? It's crazy how time is flying by, it's right around the corner. This year's theme is imagine your story. Where can your mind transport you? What stories can you create? We thought this was ever so appropriate, being that we're having to do a lot of our living and reading in our minds and from our homes, not interacting with other people. So we're inviting you to imagine your story and connect with the community through your local libraries over stories you love and engage with virtual events and programs with all options for ages of all different kinds. Again, the program is basically going to be offered virtually this year. The age groups that we're talking about include early literacy, which are ages zero to five. Our youngest readers will enjoy virtual story times and engaging online performances. Elementary, so grades K through five, enjoying a variety of virtual educational and craft activities from home. We have a teen program as well. And this year, our teen librarian has really made it focused on civic engagement, being an election year as well as a census year, plugging into the local democratic processes and making a difference in the community. And of course, last but not least, adults also have offerings and will enjoy stimulating virtual activities and videos, all safe at home. So the program will feature entries to age-friendly prize drawings upon registration and completion of ten activities. As I mentioned, we have tracking software, it's called Beanstack. We're, depending on the age group, they'll go in and track the ten activities they complete. Once they do, they'll be entered into drawings for different prizes for the different age groups. In addition to that, each age group has the opportunity to pick up a take-home summer reading kit with one to three free books, depending on the age group, and theme materials to enrich your experience. More information will be coming about how we'll be doing a socially-distanced pickup for people that are interested in that, closer to when the program starts. It did say on a previous slide, but the program will run from June sixth through August first. For more information or to pre-register, just visit our website at the link you see below, which is just dash summer. And we also just wanted to really quickly do another push for the census and highlight the collection again. This is the most updated information as of today, literally. As you can see, Altadena's average is sixty-seven point seventy-six collection rate. Some areas of the city are definitely more counted than others. Now that we're back in the building, we want to come up with some outreach ideas, especially to connect with the undercounted tracks. This will include possibly doing some phone calling to patrons, not only in that area, but from across the city for library staff just to check in, but also to ask them if they filled out the census and if they need information on how to do so. We're also open to other ideas from the town council members. If you want to connect with me and talk to me about how we could potentially try to reach the undercounted areas, we're definitely interested in doing that. Please, please shoot me an email or with any other ideas that you might have. And just to conclude, another quote, "Libraries store the energy that fuels imagination. They open up windows to the world and inspire us to explore and achieve and contribute to improving our quality of life. Libraries change lives for the better", as said by Sidney Sheldon. So even from a distance, libraries can make a big difference, especially during these tough and separated times. So thank you again for letting me present. We love partnering with the town council and collaborating with you. So I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Okay, before we go into questions, just want everybody to know that we are really running short on time right now. We have very little left and we've got a lot to get through. So if you have, you will have Nikki's contact information, so you can contact her with any questions you have. If there's anything pressing, feel free to ask right now. But if it's not pressing and so we can get through all the items on the agenda and move on. So anyway, so we'll open it up to questions, but please consider that right now, because we do have a lot to get through. Councilmember now.
With the curbside pickup, I know it starts Thursday, can people call in their requests tomorrow for pickup on Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Starts tomorrow at ten AM. We'll be having on our website all the information about how to do that, as well as making it the top slider on our page. And we're sending out an e-blast first thing tomorrow, so everyone will be made aware who's on our list.
Councilmember one.
So thank you very much for all your great work. My quick little plug is we're doing Wild LA Wednesdays virtually from the Altadena Library. Our special guest will be Lila Higgins and paleontologist Dr. Prothero. So that'll, I'll have that information on our website. So thank you for the Altadena Library on some amazing programming.
And thank you for the plug, Dot.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to say thank you, thank you Nikki and everybody at the library. And thank you for your partnership during this time for making this happen for the town council. And I feel very bad about trying to push out now for our time limit at the end. But just know that how much we appreciate everything. So thank you so much.
Of course, thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on, item five point two. This goes to, who's going to take the lead on this one?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Hi, so this is our item on, what did we call it?
Hi, so this is our item on, what did we call it? Food Feeding Altadena: Local Sources in Need. So on the website, back to COVID, check out LA County's amazing work. We have now a food link on the Altadena Town Council website that relates to food sources. And if I can find it really quick, you can go there. Let me just go up there really quick. And then in there, there are some amazing county stuff. Roadmap to Recovery COVID, so, and the state of California. So stay up to date on the county and the state projects for seniors. They're all there. And then the Altadena Farmers Market will be now, by popular demand, was, happens every Wednesday. So starting tomorrow, this is your reminder, anybody of the age of sixty-five or on EBT can access free produce boxes that feed a family of four from the Altadena Farmers Market. First come, first served. All the boxes were gone by three o'clock. So please, we gave away thirty, and then through donations, community donations, we're gonna try, they're aiming, Stacy Whitney is aiming for one hundred boxes. This is locally, organically grown, pesticide-free, fresh produce. And they, again, until they run out, so Stacy suggests one box for vehicles, show up with your ID for seniors, and CalFresh cards for EBT. This is a no-contact market. And so no walk-up service, and you need to order starting Thursdays for paid. First come, first served for our seniors. And she wants to thank especially all of the great people, and I've run out of time. Great stuff. Joy Lamb, thank you for donations. That really helped out. She's been Kia. And Making Masks, giving them to the community members in exchange for payment, so creative ways. Friends Indeed, and the Altadena Farmers Market. And then I'm gonna toss this over to Nick.
You want to mute Nick?
There we go. Yeah, I just wanted to mention the Altadena Rotary, of which I'm a member, and Sylvia and Jennifer are members, and Doug Cauliflower. They've been working with El Patron to donate a meal a day to needy families. There we go, look at that. Funds raised by the club and generous donations to Maggie Cortez over at El Patron help make this possible. Maggie tells me she pulls names from a large pool of submissions made on behalf of families in need. So the winner then gets to choose five items from the menu, all provided by El Patron, prepared by El Patron. And then those wishing to help out are encouraged to nominate a needy family. And if they wanna do so, they can also make a donation to help the program along. And if you wish to make a donation, just contact Maggie Cortez. I've got the phone number, but Dorothy has graciously put that on the site, so it's all, it's there for everyone to see. It's a great program, and I think it's, it's something we should definitely be promoting.
Okay, and I also know that there's other programs. I know that Councilmember Nat's been working with Grocery Outlet about their outreach. Indeed, I know Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Lee have been working with PUSD in their school programs handing out food. So this whole thing was, we wanted to make sure that, you know, feeding Altadena right now during this pandemic is really important. A lot of people need, you know, don't have the means to get the food, so we wanna make sure that if you have a program, could you pass it along to Councilmember Wong, so we can put it on that list? So the community members can find ways to, to find food. So thanks much to everybody, and, and please submit everything to Councilmember Wong. Okay, I, I'm gonna move on here to committee reports. Item six, six point one, Councilmember Markinson.
Yes, we did not have a land use meeting in May. However, Sylvia and I have a new project in our census tract that we started working on. We met with the planner today and got a bunch of information. I expect, if everybody can sort of mark your calendars, if you're on land use, and of course, I'll send the details out to everybody when I get them finalized. July seventh, that we would try to have a land use meeting to review the project if all of the, if the applicant has all the information in that we need. And that is really all I have. I, we don't need to discuss it tonight or, or have any discussion about it, but you can email me any questions, and if you do, remember, if you do have projects that come up in your census tract, and maybe I haven't heard about them yet, please send me the details via email, and then we'll get you started too. We've promised the community, and we are doing so to continue work on these projects, so we'll let everybody know how we're gonna do.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, item five, six point two, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening again. This is your report from your election chair. Everyone received this, but I'm gonna read it into the record. "In March, Altadena Town Council members received a draft copy of proposed election rules for the election year 2020. The rules, dates, and committee members could not be voted into effect at the March meeting of the ATC due to the governor's suspension of public gatherings and meetings. Originally, this year's election was tentatively scheduled for June. However, serious considerations needed to be made about how to navigate the election process during the pandemic. In consideration of public safety and the stay-at-home order, I, as election chair, am proposing that the council consider postponing the election until November 2020, possibly aligning with the national election. Out of an abundance of caution and in following with state and local directives, I, as election chair, am proposing that the current terms for sitting council members be extended until new members are sworn in after the new 2020 election date. As Chair of the Election Committee, I am providing the following recommendations for your consideration. One, postpone the 2020 ATC election to November 2020. The exact date will be determined later. Two, allowing for council members to vacate their seats as of the twenty-first day of July 2020, if they wish not to continue to serve through the proposed November election date. In the meantime, know that your council representatives are working together to ensure that election rules, procedures are maintained throughout the roll out of state and county directives. We will continue to provide updates through our website and virtual council was reviewed and approved by the executive committee, your Chair Veronica Jones. So we need a motion to approve this, if this is okay with everybody."
So, so let's do this. We'll, we'll put a motion, then we'll get a second, but before we go to a vote, we'll open it up for discussion, in case there's any questions.
So moved on the motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Is there any questions for the chair on the motion on the floor right now? Councilmember Nat.
I just wanted to confirm, what date do you need to know those that are not going to extend their terms through November? When do you need to know that information from them?
As soon as possible. I mean, we have, you have up until July twenty-first, I mean, what is it, June twenty-first? You have up until that date, but the sooner the better. So we just know how to plan and what we're actually going to be left with as a town council.
And just so everybody knows, it takes about three months out planning of an election, you know, to get all the information, the rules, to know the election committee and everything else. So currently, what the motion on the floor is, you know, that there are other things that go into this, and with the the stay-at-home order and everything else, and realizing that there has to be a three-month plan. I think, I think the Chair of the Election Committee's proposal is quite valid, that if we align it with something like the general election, then we know that certain things can happen at certain times, and it's the one thing that we can kind of plan around. Otherwise, everything else is uncertain, so. Is there any other, any other questions before we go to a vote? Okay, motions on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, I see no abstentions, but I didn't see all the hands up for the, for the yes vote, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that this is unanimous, because I didn't see any hands up for nay or abstentions. Then so moved.
Thank you.
And, and the details will follow, but we, I understand that for the chair, unfortunately, there's a lot to consider here, so. It's not, it's not a usual circumstance. Okay, moving on, item six point three, Safe Streets. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. So due to time constraints, I won't go into detail, but there definitely has been a movement, as we, we have three parks, people walking, people coming to the trails. So I've been hearing a lot of residents ask for what's called slow streets. So slow streets, in fact, yesterday, last night, I was at Casitas, and someone had the Pasadena Slow Street sign in the middle of Casitas with a flashing light. So the slow street movement, actually, that and also widening recreation space on streets was added to the last public health order, much to do with the city of LA. They're doing it with, do you want to have a slow street or a slow street sign on your street, you know? Tell us now, so you could actually do it online, the public can. So anyone that's interested in that, I just did pitch to the county, hey, can you at least put some slow down street signs that we can then strategically place as approved in our census tracts? So anyway, that's something, so if anyone's interested in more, let me know. Or if you have any thoughts, you can share them now. And then I wanna announce that, let's see, Thursday at three o'clock, we have a Complete Street Assessment Planning Meeting, and that is an amazing thing that's happening. So the county Public Health and the County Public Works are joining these assessments. So these are studies and data, community activation, that then supports the future projects and helps the county understand what we like and care about. So, you know, some great stuff has been happening, so the Complete Street Assessment will be done virtually. And since we're boots on the ground and we're walking around, it's really a great time to identify particular corridors. So I'll just throw Mariposa out there, you know, that street doesn't have sidewalks, it has a school. There was an accident yesterday, last, I think it was two days ago, at Santa Anita in Mariposa. It connects to businesses, the libraries there. So I think it's a really great time for us to engage as a council, if you wanna join and be part of it, and/or, you know, represent through your census tract. So that, again, that meeting will be, three o'clock will be our introductory meeting with the Berkeley Safe Trek staff. And that, again, we have attendants coming from LA County Public Health and Public Works, and at least one, two school representatives. I would, of course, love to invite Chamber of Commerce, anybody else that wants to get involved. And if you don't wanna be in the planning team, you can also then be part of the input team. So that's Complete Streets. Any questions?
No questions? Thank you. No questions? Okay, moving on, item six point four, Education Committee. Councilmember Lee.
Hi, I'd like to just take today just to talk about looming budget cuts in California due to COVID-19. And very quickly, it looks like there is probably over a fifty billion dollar shortfall in our projected budget for the state, which means that PUSD could lose thirty-five million in the 2020, 2021 school year. So just to let everyone know, this is a huge topic, and it's going to get talked about a lot. And there are gonna be a lot of ideas coming up as to how we're going to solve this problem. Which brings me to the census, and I know that Ms. Winslow went through the facts that we came up in our self-response. And it's really important that now we're in the sixties and seventies percentages for self-response in our census tract. It would be great if we could get up to ninety, into the nineties, and it's not that far away. We can definitely do that. And what I wanna stress is that the census, these numbers, everything that we have right now for senior resources, school lunches, highways, our boundaries for our congressional districts are based on the census from 2010. So now we're basically recounting. So we wanna help every single person in Altadena. And it's really important that if you don't understand why the census is important, think COVID-19, and think about what we're getting from the federal government. That's based on census numbers. Talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends in Altadena, and make sure they have done the self-response. Because I think after that, then people come to your door and knock on your door and ask you. So I just really, on the Education Committee side, I just think the budget is a top priority. And I wanted to place that out there, because it's something that I would like to continue to talk about in the Education Committee Reports. Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Is it extended till December now? Is that the date I heard?
I, I believe so. If Nikki's still on, she probably has the exact date, so.
October thirty-first.
October thirty-first.
Yeah, they extended it by three months.
Okay, so 2020census.gov, that's where you go.
Okay, any other questions? That's, we're good? Okay, moving on, last item of the evening. Item seven, General Public, General Public Comments. So I'm gonna send this over to Councilmembers of.
Okay. I have four public comments, and I will, I also have a timer here, so a couple of them are a little bit long, so I can stop myself when I get to the end of, of two minutes. The first one is from Joy Walters. Dear Councilmembers, Altidinans for Clean Healthy Air is a grassroots group whose mission is to educate the public about the health and environmental hazards of gasoline-powered leaf blowers, to inform the public about alternative ways of gardening, and to advocate for ordinances to regulate the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Gasoline-powered leaf blowers are loud. Many exceed the permitted noise level, affecting health and disrupting the peace and quiet of neighborhoods. Leaf blowers are also polluting. One hour of gasoline-powered leaf blower use emits more pollution than a new sedan driving from LA to Denver. In addition, leaf blower use damages the soil and deprives trees and shrubs from the mulch that can feed their roots, keep them cool, and help retain moisture in the soil. Lastly, leaf blowers raise a dirt and dust cloud, which can contain mold spores, mold spores, insect eggs, heavy metals, animal feces, and probably SARS-CoV-2. The LA Times on March twenty-second, 2020 described the findings, the dirty air increases virus risk for coronavirus is similar to SARS-CoV-2, both the risk of getting pneumonia and the risk of having more severe illness when pneumonia is present. The same is likely to be true for SARS-CoV-2. The New York Times has reported April ninth, 2020, that now more people are at home, working, or learning remotely. They have become aware of the annoyance and disruption created by, by leaf blower noise. We asked that the town council join us in asking public health to look into the health effects of leaf blowers in general as they relate to the spread and severity of COVID-19. That's the end of this part, this particular one. Okay, stop and reset. Okay, the next one is from Ethan Carlisle. This is on Trails, I think, yes. My statement is that- My statement is this, please consider opening Pinecrest and Altadena entrances to Eden Canyon because only the main entrance is open, trying to social distance is impossible. And I've seen dozens of people locked in the parking lot after five huddled together. Having more options to enter the canyon will keep the public further apart. The current arrangement is encouraging the very behaviors we are trying to avoid. Also, those of us who use the canyon for recreation and live within blocks of the Pinecrest entrance and have used it for over forty years have a say here. Not just the local Pinecrest residents who have always had an alternate, an alternate agenda to keep that gate closed as much as possible. People are getting restless and everyone that uses the canyon knows it's reaching a boiling point. Open the gate or we'll do it for you. Okay. The next two are on the sheriff's station. The first one is from Deb Halberstadt. If the Altadena Sheriff's Station were to close except for patrol units, Altadena would lose all of the station's involvement with our community like holiday time toys and food giveaway, National Night Out, National Car Show, the station captain's participation in many meetings like the Altadena Town Council, Akona and Neighborhood Watch Meeting, SENS for instance, community relations officers, welfare checks for the elderly, sheriff's station's volunteers and volunteers on patrol, explorer programs for teens, community emergency response team, search members, Altadena Search and Rescue Team, Vida for troubled teens, vacation packs, support for Christmas tree lane, parking patrol for unwanted vehicles, LASD schools, school support officer and the posse. It would increase response time for all crime and safety issues involving citizens and businesses. Sheriff Villanueva has not backed down from his decision to cripple the station. Many of the programs mentioned are already gone or have no LASD involvement. And the last one, which is also for the sheriff's station, and I need a timer because this is long, okay. This is a letter that was addressed to Supervisor Barker. You must authorize a budget that will allow the sheriff to keep the Altadena Sheriff's Station and its many services intact. I've been inquiring information, I'm sorry, it's from Bob Walter. I've been acquiring information about the closing of the Altadena Sheriff's Station and this much seems clear to me. There are really two issues here. One is the need to completely preserve the Altadena Sheriff's Station, but the second is what appears to be difficulties in the interaction between the board and Sheriff Villanueva. Unfortunately, the upshot of this lack of harmony between you and the sheriff is that my community is in danger of falling through the cracks in the midst of your tug-of-war. The Altadena Sheriff's Office is woven into the fabric of my community. If you poll citizens, you'll be regaled with stories of quick response, sensitive and patient interaction, and great pride at having this fine group of people on call close at hand. We know about the crime, rise in crime in 1993 when the station was closed. We also know how far this community has come in terms of overcoming suspicion and becoming a safer place to live once the station was reopened. We feel that this improvement is due as much to the sheriff's station outreach into the community as it is to their quick response time. Disassembling of any of its programs would be devastating. Altadena is a unique community. The 2010 census reveals around forty thousand people living in La Cucina Montrose, La Cañada, the area surfaced by the La Cucina Sheriff's Station. Altadena has forty-two thousand people according to the census. The big difference between the two areas is that Altadena has a twenty-four percent segment of African-Americans while the other area has point five percent. There have been far too many stories of communities with large black populations getting the short end of the stick when it comes to education, infrastructure, and other community services. You must not let Altadena get added to the list of these inequities. I write this as a white person tremendously proud to live in a town that is actually diverse and that pays more than lip service to getting along. We perhaps more than almost any community in Los Angeles are an example of how diversity can work. In this COVID time of vast unemployment and the potential for massive homelessness and perhaps worse, as desperate people try to stay alive, it should be increasing health and safety budget components in general, not cutting. Thank you. Okay, that, that's our, all of the public comment. And oh, I should mention, especially after the, the first one on the leaf blowers, Akona is having it, the, their meeting next week and leaf blowers will be one of the topics. Thank you. That's it.
All right, well, that's it. We, we, we made it in the time. So thank you so much. We started five minutes late, we're ending five minutes over, so the timing is perfect. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it for everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved. Thanks, everybody, and I look forward to seeing you all again soon.